Good. Good evening. We're calling to order this meeting of the Planning Commission of the Town of Monument, August 13th, 2025. Before we get started, I have a couple of comments to make. I'd like to state that the Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and via a Microsoft Teams streaming application. All Planning Commission meeting information can be found on the Town of Monument website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendations for the town council regarding land use matters in the Town of Monument. Each commissioner agrees to a nonpartial objective and fair review, which includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. For those attending tonight who wish to provide comment on agenda items, you may speak to the commission during the public comment section of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and are asked to come to the podium and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Microsoft Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the raise your hand option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on that same subject. Again, thanks for everyone in attendance and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ray, would you mind taking role?
Absolutely. Thank you. Chair Egley.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Hatch. Commissioner Hours.
Here.
Commissioner Parr.
Here.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Here.
Thank you. That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Before we get into moving through the agenda, we have some changes to the agents tonight. We're going to, on a recommendation of staff, we'd like to flip items three and four so that we move the public hearing first and the discussion item to the second item. If I can get a motion in a second for that. We have a motion in a second.
Second, Chair Commissioner Trujillo.
Ray, would you?
Thank you. Chair Egley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch. Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Parr.
Yes.
And Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes all in favor and unopposed.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Any comments, corrections, additions to the minutes before we entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
To approve the minutes of July 9, 2025, Planning Commission meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Trujillo.
Thank you. Ray?
Thank you. Chair Egley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch.
Yes.
Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Parr.
Yes.
And Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes all in favor and unopposed.
Thank you, Ray. Next item on the agenda is, I'd like to have Dan introduce the newest member of the Planning Commission as an alternate member of the Planning Commission.
She is joining us tonight. She was appointed as an alternate Plan Commission member by the town council at their last meeting. I'm excited to introduce you to her. Not only are we starting having enough members stick around long term here, we have enough to start having backup if one of you takes ill or has another commitment to go. And we're even more fortunate to have her on her experience professionally is from, and I can let her explain a little bit more about what her background is, is definitely going to help support the role of this commission and the importance of this commission in serving the community and in review of current development, long-term, long-range plans and in code standards going forward. And then even more importantly, her input is going to be invaluable for the comprehensive plan update that we're undergoing currently. So with that, I don't know if you want to, if you can provide just a just a quick description of who you are and I'll stop talking.
Real quick, because it's ad hoc, I see it wasn't on the agenda, Valerie Bommer. We moved here in the fall of 2023 and we decided to stay. We're obviously past military. We're both government civilians, my husband and I. I am a project management professional. My background largely resides in risk management assessments and government planning for war plans. And obviously, it's a huge step away from government at the local level. But nonetheless, it uses the same process when you look at problems, decisions to those problems and different calls about how to get to a solution. So I'm excited just to sit back and learn and see how I can contribute in any way. So are there any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you guys.
No, thank you. Thanks for the forced impromptu presentation. So apologize. That won't happen again. So thank you, Chair.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our first item is a public hearing recommendation. First case is case number 2025-012, a request for approval of a final plat to be known as Lewis Palmer Subdivision Filing One located at 36 North Jefferson Street. This case has been noticed for public hearing and we have a presentation by the staff.
Thank you, Chair. Give me one moment. All right. Thank you. So yes, go to our final plat for the Lewis Palmer subdivision filing number one. This first slide just describes that this final plat hearing was noticed for public hearing. The applicant met all hearing requirements, got a public notice sign on the property at least two weeks ahead of the meeting, and everything has been done adequately. The applicant and property owner information are the Lewis Palmer School District located at 146 North Jefferson Street here in Monument, Colorado. This is for the site located at 36 North Jefferson Street. To the north of that property is the Northland Community Church and some single-family attached housing. To the west is St. Peter Catholic Church Chapel and School, as well as single-family attached housing. To the east is the Bethesda Gardens of Monument Retirement Home, and to the south is more single-family housing. The overall request is approval of a final plat for Lewis Palmer subdivision filing number one. And to the right, you can see just the general location of the site that we are discussing today. Here we are describing what the zoning of the property as well as the 2017 comprehensive plans designation for future land uses for this property. It is currently zoned single-family detached medium density, whereas the future land use of the 2017 comprehensive plan identified it as public slash quasi-public land uses. Moving forward, the applicant, Ms. Melissa Andrews with Lewis Palmer School District, is seeking approval of a final plat known as Lewis Palmer Subdivision Filing One for the purpose of subdividing individual lots for sale and future development, dedicating any public utility easements and private drainage movements, creating private access as needed. At this time, the applicant is not seeking a site plan approval for any known development to occur right now. So the overall request is to reach these two goals, a replat of a portion of the existing 23.482 acre parcel into two separate parcels measuring approximately 20.648 acres and 2.834 acres respectively. A vacation of a portion of the Adam Street tract A right of way totaling about 1440 square feet. Moving forward, I'll go through the draft findings of fact that town staff has managed to come meet. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the proposed final plat does not establish the ultimate use of the property in its conformance with the comp plan, parks, trails, and open space plan, and other plans adopted by the town from time to time as required in 1802-260C review and approval criteria for a final plat. Compatibility with adjacent properties, the proposed final plat does not affect compatibility with adjacent properties as required in 1802-260C review and approval criteria. A lot and development patterns, future development will require a site plan and review when it is needed. Moving forward, cost of improvements, again, a lot of reiterating here, the proposed final plat does not contemplate or provide development details, and therefore, the property owner is unable to establish that they will bear the property's share of the costs of onsite and offsite community improvements and/or facilities as required by 1802-260C. Very similar with natural hazards, natural conservation, all the same. And again, development code, while the contents and form of the proposed final plat conforms with technical plat requirements, it does not include adequate information to confirm that the property will be developed in conformance with local county, state, and federal regulations. Again, no development is being proposed at this time. Future development, at a minimum, future development will require site plan approval and be reviewed to conform with underlying zoning designation for the property and criteria for development review found in the Land Development Code. Additional modifications to the plat may be required in accordance with the proposed development plan and established code and ordinances at that time. Finally, our recommended action is a motion to make a recommendation to approve the final plat known as Lewis Palmer Subdivision Filing One located at 36 North Jefferson Street, as supported by the attached finding of fact and described by the following documents, those being the actual final plat itself that you received in your staff report and the attached draft findings of fact.
Thank you, Ray. Is the applicant present and would he like to speak to anything before we open up the public hearing? No? All right. All right. We'll open up the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone present in the room that would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone online that you know of, Ray?
I do not believe so.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and we'll go ahead and see if there's some comments or questions by the commission, Commissioner Green.
I'm a little bit confused. This is zoned, single-family. This is the final plat. Their plan will be to develop single-family homes? No.
So this property is owned by the school district. It's been zoned, single-family forever, close to at least. The proposed, the future proposed use for this specific parcel of land that's being platted out of the the rest of the property is proposed to be the future location of Tri Lakes Cares and which is a community use that would be permitted in the single-family zoning district. So at this time, there's really nothing that, there's nothing that they would need to do to to protect the potential or future use to be located in this district. We are going through the comprehensive planning process right now and we might, as a result of that comprehensive planning process, propose that a public or similar type of district is created and this property be rezoned for that. But rather than jumping the gun and rezoning that problem, this property to something very specific for a a use that isn't being proposed or shown to you tonight, we're not recommending any type of zoning changes for that. It's still safe for the for Tri Lakes Cares to be working with this and it's still keeps us in the best light for future discussions with them as as we're planning, as we're working on our comprehensive plan and our downtown master plan.
So the intent right now is to leave it as one lot and not to further subdivide it?
That is correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
No questions.
Commissioner Peterson.
I don't think I have any questions either. It's similar to the previous questions of existing conditions. Is the intent to leave existing buildings on the parcel? Or is that intended to be demoed and?
There's actually no, nothing proposed at this time. This is just strictly consolidation of the property and then parcelling out that one lot for for Tri Lakes Cares, a future, future, or to be presented at a future meeting when they're ready.
Yeah, I don't think I have any further questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Parr?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Hours?
Got no question. It's hard to question an organization that facts that they do everything in the property that they have, the way it's supposed to be done. So I have every competence that they'll do the best thing for the community. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hatch?
The space that is being left to the school district will maintain the same buildings, the baseball field, the bus depot, and the school district building?
No proposed changes.
No proposed changes. And by taking this section away, we are not creating a quasi-public area. We're just leaving a single family?
At this time, we're not changing the zoning of any of the property. The schools and institutional or community center uses are permitted in single-family residential under our current, the current provisions of the code. And as I noted before, when we, as we complete our comprehensive plan update, there might be proposed change, we might, the plan might recommend changes to our zoning code that specify a specific zoning district for this area in light of the school being located here and other community center, center uses that are proposed.
So this is allowing them to sell off this portion or to give this portion to another entity to build?
So the school district is in process of selling this portion of property to Tri Lakes Care so they can begin planning to build their new facility at this location? I'm correct in saying that? Correct? Okay, good. And they're ready to do it now? No, they're good. They'd like to. Yeah, they just can't fit my name on the side of the building, so.
Thank you. I just had a couple of items. I know that it says that a site plan has not been submitted, but I noticed that on the Town of Monument website under the Monument Development Projects, there's a, looks like a preliminary site plan.
That's excellent. We have one visitor to our website. That's awesome. So we have a, our development process starts off with a pre-application conference. Tri Lakes Cares took advantage of that pre-application conference and met with us as well as any of our development review partners to just to get a better understanding of what our process is and what some of the challenges might be, and it allowed our partners to ask questions of them as well. We keep everything up on our website such as pre-application conferences, projects, and then others that are going through the process to main transparency and to inform the public. So I appreciate that you saw that. But that's just on the pre-application process. There's no formal application. We have not received a formal application from them yet.
And then I guess my second question, when the formal application is submitted with the site plan, is that something that'll come before the commission or will that be done administratively? The approval for that site plan?
I'm trying to remember now.
That it's a conditional use, so it would be coming.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions.
I'm quicker at that, but I didn't remember.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? All right. Chair will entertain a motion?
Commissioner Trujillo, make a motion, make a recommendation to approve the final plat to be known as Lewis Palmer Subdivision Filing One as supported by the attached findings of fact.
Commissioner Hours, second.
Ray, please take role.
Thank you very much. Chair Egley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch. Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Parr.
Yes.
And Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Seven in favor and unopposed.
Thank you. All right. Our next item, the introduction of a proposed new zoning district to be designated as neighborhood commercial, and this is a discussion item, and we have a presentation by the staff.
And it's my honor to serve for this town, and we start with our director first, and then I continue.
Thanks, Miriam. So yeah, we're very fortunate to have Miriam on board. She comes with a lot of experience and I'm looking forward to seeing seeing her work with you as we move forward with current planning projects as well as code development. Tonight is a code development discussion that we're looking at having with you. I want to just, again, as an act of transparency, I want to explain where this came from and why we're doing this tonight. The, several years ago, I, before Dan, before I came on board, the community purchased a piece of property over at Gold Canyon and 105. And the purpose of purchasing that property was to protect the adjacent neighborhood from a development that they, that the the council and the community felt wasn't compatible with the adjacent neighborhood in that area. It's come time for us to sell that property. So we want to make sure that as we're selling it, that we're setting it up for success for both the neighborhood and for the use of that property. Now, that'll be the last time I mention that property, but I wanted you to understand the context. What we've identified at the staff level is, is that we're missing a zoning district. We are, it's this potential neighborhood commercial zoning district that would be able to serve a neighboring piece of property as well as provide a service to those neighbors without having a negative impact on the neighborhood. That's hard. So we're gonna, what we're hoping to do with you tonight, and Miriam's gonna lead the conversation, is find, see how we can develop the zoning district that could be applicable throughout the town so that we can provide this, provide this opportunity that I've described without causing, causing a negative impact on the area. You're at the very beginning of the process. As you might be aware, text amendments are, by code are not, do not go to Plan Commission. I hope to change that, but that's right now the way it's set up. I asked, I asked the council, rather than they have, leading the conversation on their own, that they send this back to the Plan Commission and let you begin that conversation and really try to work out the the details of what that district might be. Miriam is also prepared to take this to a neighborhood, a neighborhood meeting for that specific property. But I'd really like you to focus on this, on what this district would mean throughout the community rather than just in one place. If we wanted to just make conditions for a single property, it wouldn't be going through this process. That would be a process of special use and PUD and all this. We really see this as an opportunity to create a new district that will serve the community throughout. Another thing I want to point out is in a tip, if that opportunity hadn't come before me, I probably would never have brought this to you at this time. We're in the process of updating our comprehensive plan. That's the time to have these kind of conversations. That way, you can have a comprehensive approach, looking at all issues that you're trying to address and have that, that long-term community conversation, full community conversation. Unfortunately, because we need to sell this property for financial reasons and others related to that, we need to bring this, we need to actually start addressing this now. No pressure. Do it. No pressure. But I just wanted you to understand all the context, but also know that staff is not pushing you to do something that you're not comfortable with. I really want you to have a good conversation with Miriam and really set the best tone or set, set, create the best district that will work for the purpose that we're talking about tonight. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Miriam and if you have questions, just ask. If you need to have a conversation with each other, you can. This is not a public hearing. This is more of a workshop kind of process because the code doesn't, isn't designed for this. And tonight isn't the end either. You're not making, you're not passing any recommendations or any changes to the code this evening. You're really just helping us create the framework for this type of a district and then with hopes that we can bring it back to council to, as a tax amendment and then start, and then bring it back to you to, to apply it to specific properties or property and serve the neighbors properly as a result.
Kind of echoes some parts that the director, Dan, mentioned about that. It's the open conversation that we found because of the fabric and identity that this town has. Some parts of the code, text code, needs to be changed and add a zoning district, a new zoning district. So tonight, conversation is regarding to that. So I made a quick presentation to go through that and give you all a kind of make decision how we, we think this missing part, it should be added to the zoning code and why and which part we should kind of amend to make that zone happen in the code. So for starting, or as a department, it's proposing the creation of a neighborhood commercial NC zoning district as a new category in the Towns Land Development Code. This district is designed to allow some scale and neighborhood-friendly businesses that meet the daily needs of nearby residents while blending with the surrounding neighborhoods. Adding this zoning option will give us more flexibility to support local services. So what we looking for to have a healthy community in order to have that, so we give the community to enable access to essential services, promote physical activity and social connection, reduce car dependency and population, sorry, pollution, support equity, resilience, and local economy. So why we need to have, add this to the zoning, because we want to protect well-placed, scaleful communities and sustainable integrated into neighborhood group. So having NC district, including in the zoning code text, is essential because zoning, it's what gives this legal structure long-term protection. So what we have in the code right now, so as you see on the right, there is a kind of set of rules for land use and development in a town that is update on June 7, 2021. At that time, the NC or Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District was not included. From time to time, updating are needed to keep up with changes in how our community grows and those businesses. This change supports our community's growth, encourage small businesses' opportunity, and strengthen neighborhood connection. Approving this update will help us plan smarter for the future. That, as Director Dan mentioned in comprehensive plan, we work on that and we talk and do more conversation about this. And if you see the existing condition report that is created in July 4, 2023, shows Monument, it's growing rapidly with a strong family-oriented character primarily. primarily single-family homes and high home ownership. This factor create a need for nearby neighborhood-scale goods and services. The proposed Neighborhood Commercial NC Zoning District will provide well-placed, small-scale commercial areas that serve residents, preserve community character, and modernize our zoning to match current and future needs or demand. And now, what we want to amend in the zoning code, as you can see, we are adding Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District to Chapter 18.03.205 that regarding the establishment of zoning district. It means it's give us the type of zoning district that we have in the code. And missing part that we are discussing tonight is Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. And also, we go through the classification use in district and come up with some type of businesses or mixed-use or residential that we need to have in this type of zoning district. So this is the short kind of table that it shows what we kind of provide to the residents as a community, neighborhood community business. So we change the Article 3 district use. And this is the recommendation that we have, and we need to, you approve it based on what we provided in the report and in the presentation, or you can ask for continuing our study and research, or you can deny. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, open it up to any comments, questions? Commissioner Green?
Would you tell me one more time where the land is that the town bought?
Again, I don't want to focus on that.
I understand.
For context, it's at Gold Canyon 105. So it's on the, it's just, just east of where, east side, it's the same little center. You pull up a map if you want. Yeah, pull up a map. But it's a part of an original, there's two PUDs that kind of come head-to-head over at that location on 105, and this is remnants of those two PUDs up against 105. There's two parcels that are adjacent to the road entering into the neighborhood. And there's also a part, it's also joined to a parcel that runs along 105.
And they weren't dedicated to the town, the town bought?
No, they weren't. They originally were conceived, I believe, for residential use, but they've been left over. And what happened is, if I understand correctly, there was a large box user proposed for that location, and it was going through, it was either in some case, and it was just super concerned at the time that that would have a negative impact on traffic into the neighborhood. It was going to be placed to, there was just all sorts of things that were concerning at that time. So again, we would want to put too much, we don't want to put a lot of focus on this because it could be applied everywhere, but how do we bring a commercial use? That's, how do we introduce a commercial use adjacent to or up against our residential neighborhood?
Sure.
And all that, so.
I just, when you said it, I didn't register.
Ray put it up there, that you could see the vacant space up there. It's this L-shaped piece of property. It's surrounded by residential. So we want to, we just want, and there's a great community park to the south. It's just, it's a good example of where we could use this, if it's designed right.
I want to go through some things really fast and the uses, and I'll do it as fast as I can. First of all, I think if you're going to do this, which is a Euclidean zone, the performance standards are going to be everything. That is so necessary if you're wanting to merge neighborhood and business, which I support, but it can, especially these days, you know, it's not like the turn of the 20th century when you had little two-pump gas stations on the corner. So I'll start off with convenience store. It's not that I have a problem with that, but I don't see many people building the small convenience stores that we saw in our neighborhoods growing up. And they tend to be really large and not very compatible with a neighborhood. I would not support, even though it's a conditional use, I would not support drive-throughs and drive-up services in a neighborhood business zone. I just think part of the thing behind a neighborhood business zone is you're trying to do something where people will walk, and that sort of defeats the purpose. Oh, so this is probably something I just didn't read closely enough. You have clinics separated from substance abuse treatment facility, and clinic is a permitted use. Everybody knows the history of the methadone clinic in downtown. So I want to make sure that that is not a clinic that could go that direction. The recreation and entertainment for outdoor, I see as a conditional use, but sound, noise, that's going to be huge. I don't know if you actually want to make outdoor concerts. You know, I don't know. I think they do them at Stapleton. Maybe it works, but it's a concern of mine. And that's it for the uses that I have. But I do think that performance standards for this zone are very important.
Thank you, Commissioner. And regarding to the both, the two firsts that you mentioned, yes, we kind of go through that and make kind of consider to check what exactly is happening there. Regarding the recreational outdoor, it's, because it's conditional use, we put the size and the use, how they can use, and the time operation of the area in the conditional use. So it makes them a little restriction to use that area. But sometimes, we kind of experience the neighborhood wants to have a small party or small gathering or for socializing. So they kind of need these type of spaces. But as you mentioned, yes, we put some kind of restriction in the code regarding to access for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Treehill?
Oh, sure.
With regard to her concern about the convenience store, could that be made a conditional use rather than a primary use so that there could be more control? Because I understand her point.
So if I can respond to that, that's okay. The, convenience store is a retail space. It's retail use. But we did talk about the idea of limiting sizes of space. So we weren't going to introduce a 4,000-square-foot convenience store, but we were rather going to be proposing 800 to 1,200 square-foot stores. So that keeps them small. It keeps them affordable. It actually brings opportunities for someone who might be having a home occupation in that neighborhood who wants to move into something bigger and out to a neighborhood store. So if the concern is this larger store, that's, the automobile is going to be the main way of getting to it, that might be a way to address it. I wasn't sure, actually, Commissioner Green, the specifics of your statements. I'm not questioning it. I just, I would like to know more about it.
No, you're correct.
Yeah.
Correct. It's about size.
But we want it. One of the things council asked of me when they asked me to bring this back is they wanted to make sure that this was affordable and usable by the residents of our community. So, and we talked about smaller retail spaces. We talked about live-work conditions, where you might live above the store that you're operating. Or there's apartments above that providing an alternative housing, alternative housing for the neighborhood. So I'm glad you brought that up, and we got to talk about that a little bit further. So I'm hoping that that's what we're proposing here. And as far as conditional uses go, I think that our code has lots of room, and I think we'll continue to talk about this. We have lots of uses listed as conditional uses, but we don't provide conditions for many of them. Drive-throughs, we talk about how many cars have to be between the menu board and the window. But there are a lot of conditions that the community can establish and judge a specific use on and have that in the code. But we'll have, we'd have to talk about that and develop that as moving forward. So I hope I'm answering some questions, or I'm just drooling on. You can stop me, so.
Good. Commissioner Treehill?
Yes, sir. Thank you. My first question is, where are we seeing this as a success in the local region within Colorado Springs? Can you tell me an area that you see this concept being utilized as a success for the economy with the current economy as we have now? What area in Colorado Springs or close by to include Castle Rock, Colorado Springs, Pueblo even? What areas have something similar to this? That you're defining a need, but I'm not seeing anywhere within the region that possibly can potentially provide that same type of service? Can you describe one?
I think what you're, what you're, the way I would tie, where I would describe this happening is probably adjacent to urban or downtown areas where you have homes that are close to, that are between an urban environment and a single-family residential environment. So you're seeing homes converted to those, these type of uses. And that's more of a reaction than I, I think what we're trying to do is create a more of a proactive approach. Commissioner Green was right. She described how we, convenience stores used to go in these locations, and those have gone away, and they've grown and they've gotten larger. So we are challenging the market here. We are trying to, in doing this. We know exactly what wants to be there, and we weren't comfortable as a community. We weren't comfortable with that. So we're trying to work through this process to see if we can come up with something that the market would be, would support. And I think we have to test it, and we'll be, and what, either before we put a piece of property on the market or before a property comes in, or maybe that's just the process. When we put it up for sale, we find out that we created something that doesn't work. So I don't have an answer.
Could I give an example?
Please.
It does merge old with new, but I think where they're going is if you drive down Boulder Street in Colorado Springs towards the hospital, it's an old neighborhood, and it used to have some little stores there on some of the corners. Some of them sat for a long time. They were built a long time ago, but a lot of them, nearly all of them, have come back. They have a bike shop or a, you know, coffee shop or some small, small retail-type thing. I like this idea, but it is hard to do it new. It's much easier if you have an old neighborhood to go back and find those old ones that were done and renovate them. So this, it's a challenge.
Yeah. And I guess going back to that, you know, now that you described an area that, you know, looks similar to that. The cons of this, obviously, increased traffic, you know, that's a concern, but even more from the economic perspective of those communities that are going to try and utilize this. We build a plan and says, or that says we do this as a function of a new code or a new set, but economically, we can't support it. Then what? You know, it's having the flexibility to adjust for that in the future if we need to change it down the line. That's, that's a concern economically. But it also now goes back to, even within that community, as the community is there, we make this into a different type of small-business-type entity, but no, it doesn't take, does that decrease that property value within that community that already is established, and now they're eating that dollar? Are they the ones that are going to be affected by the overall premise of that community? You know, by building that zone for the future?
Now, may I make, but this is going to apply to our whole community, correct? And the only comment that I would make, I see this as an asset to Downtown Monument because the people in Downtown Monument want to keep Downtown Monument small. This provides better opportunity for some smaller businesses to move in, to keep the citizens happy, to provide some of the needs that we have in Downtown Monument. So I see it as a very positive for Downtown Monument. Now, what's happening on that piece of property up there is a whole different story, but I have every confidence that'll be controlled by the things that they put into the, the, the.
So let's me. Before I understand, you know, that piece of property, it was a reason that we come with the idea that the whole town require something change in the zoning to have neighborhood kind of commercial. It's not the main reason. So after we kind of go through the town and the fabric and identity of the town, and as Commissioner mentioned, it's kind of, we want to have a healthy community. And we want to have a resilient community that each person can kind of get the good or daily needs that desire in a short distance. Right now, when I kind of draw through some of the area, so you can see, they are close to the businesses or commercial area, but they have to go with the car. They cannot walk. They cannot kind of, it's not accessible for them. So having all the area like a residential, it's not healthy. So you need to walk or kind of have it socialized with your community, your surrounding, and it doesn't happen unless you walk. If you want to get your daily and use your car, go to the big shop or kind of a big store, you may not to have a contract with your neighborhood. But these commercials bring this kind of interaction between people. So that is not the main reason that we come with this code and needs to that. Because this town, it's a small size. So they need to have a small business size. And Commissioner Martino asking if we have a kind of example around here. So I'm not, I'm new to here.
Sure.
But I kind of see this type of zoning code and working with the community that's bring economically improve in the community. So you might have some people on that area, they need a small office, or they have come, need some businesses to run. So we need keep them into the community, not commute to other city or. So we need keep them into the community, not commute to others' city or others' area to kind of do business. So yeah. To be honest, I want to kind of, every of us to open our mind and see what exactly the residents and our community needs. That's the open conversation. Maybe I'm wrong or we are wrong as a group in a community. But we are here, you lead us and let us by your experience. Which kind of business should be on that area? Or for others' area that it's missing? Thank you.
Please don't negate, there is an importance for it. So I completely understand what we're asking. I'm looking at it from the premise if it fails. That's that, and that's, it's, it's that counterintuitive aspect to make sure that if, let's say, down here on Baptist Road, right there at Glen Eagle, where the, where the King Supers is, that turns into a major strip mall for small businesses. But the economic turn turns bad, then what? You know, does that reduce the cost of housing on the property that I have in the local environment there for me as a resident of Monument? And I'm not negating the importance 100% and I get with what you're saying. But I think that we also need to look at, just like Commissioner Green said, those counterintuitive restrictions to prevent. I think at one point we had somebody that made a premise that we were bringing a strip joint down here to Monument. Now, even within that premise of the false news or whatever the narrative was. Those types of things that really restrict those individual entities that do come in, or even in that small texture or confine of location. I think that's really the gist of the problem. I, I agree with you in relation to the, what the, what the idea is. Yes.
So let me answer your question in this way. We are not kind of proposing the big box. I'm agree with you, kind of in feeling the big box, it's so hard. So if the business gone, so it's the issue for the community to infill that inbox. So what we are recommending here, it's a small businesses, like a boutique, like a small coffee shop or restaurant. We are not exactly what we need to do. That's why we are going to the community to kind of discuss with them, to see what exactly they are need or desire or missing in the community. For example, if I live on that area, something's happened and I want to buy some things in daily. So it's easier for me to walk to the small shop or get the car, go to the Walmart or some big boxes. So we should see like that, you know. Hopefully you get our point, how we can design. We are not going to propose the big box or big scale of businesses. What we are kind of our target, it's a small businesses. Small size of the spaces.
Sure. No, and please don't negate what I'm, I'm, what I'm telling you is I'm, I'm all about it. I'm, I want the small business here in Colorado. I want the small business here in Monument. I think the public wants that as well. But those restrictions on those businesses have got to be very, very clear. And I think if we don't mandate what those are, you're going to have bigger problems down here. But again, if it affects me on my property value, I'll leave Monument. Yeah.
Let me just make sure I understand the question. You're saying lowering value, you're talking about you, you own a home in that area.
Sure.
And this retail or commercial area fails. And it's impact, it's going to have a negative impact on the value of your home. That, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I think that's
who's being impacted?
Everybody within Monument would want to know if that is a failure, is it going to affect the property of my, the property value of my location?
And, and that's why we're here talking about this tonight and we're trying to, we want to work through and think about this and you, one of my thoughts is we probably should be talking to someone in the development community to get an understanding if we're heading in a direction that doesn't work currently. But the other thing too is that if it doesn't work, we have the ability to change it.
Okay.
We have the ability to change our code, which is what we're doing right now. We have the ability to rezone the property. We have to always be careful in down zoning, especially if we had sold it to someone and we're take away rights and make their property worth less. So we could, we're going to be sensitive to that in our, in our pursuit to sell property, but that could have an impact on another piece of property that gets rezoned to this. These are all things that are absolutely things we should be talking about right now. And so I'm glad you're asking that and it's giving me a lot of food to, for thought to, that we might want to bring in some special expertise. We actually have on board right now for the comp plan. So we're going to ask those questions. What, what we're looking for, what I guess what I want to do is maybe look at those standards that Commissioner Green was alluding to. Setbacks. Those things that are creating that transition from that, that residential neighborhood into this development. In addition, talking about what do we want that development to feel and look like and who is it serving? Those are all the right questions. We don't have the answers. I do feel like we're, we're forcing the market in a direction that it is uncomfortable going. And so we have to be careful with that. And, and again, I would have preferred having a larger conversation as part of the comp plan rather than bringing this in at this time, but it's just something we, we need to address now or come up with another way to manage, the, manage what we're trying to, with council, what needs to do with that property.
Completely agree. And I, I mean, I, I welcome the conversation. It's not, it's not a hit against the planning commission.
Not at all. I don't feel that way.
More so to make sure, just like Commissioner Green had already mentioned, you know, just having that aspect of we understand there's a need. We always want the taxation dollars here to be inside the town of Monument 100%. How though becomes that, you know, if we do X, how do we get it back if it was a failure? And, and that's always going to be the challenge, I'm sure on the, on just your plate alone. So I think that now how do we best do that? I think it's a broader conversation of is that need, is the community even willing to go that route? You know, because we can sit here and kick the can, but I think it's going to be one of those pieces that what do they see is necessary? Because that's really going to drive how we can convey what is the future, you know?
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir. Go ahead.
Because flies to this conversation, but I was going to ask you at some point in time when we got in the campaign. Do we have a code? Or can we create a code? That when a business, when a structure is built, that if that structure fails and if that building sits there and nothing is happening, that at some reasonable point in time, it can be required and forced that that building be removed by the owners.
There, there are communities who attempt to do that, but you are unless there's a, a danger to the community, it's very difficult to do that. You can tax buildings that are vacant. That's, but that's, that's also a challenge. Again, you're, you're, we're entering this place where we're forced, we're trying to force the market to do something. And so, yes, that, there are communities have done that, but you are taking a risk as a community. You might end up paying somebody because you can't, you're taking something away from it. Turn that around and think about it as if you decided to be away 11 months out of the year and your neighbors decided your house needed to be torn down because no one's living there. You're probably not going to accept that. So let's, we want to be careful about that. Yeah.
About a time, but you see buildings sometimes sitting forever.
Yep.
And they become eyesore and they deteriorate. And all I'm saying is, is there some, is there a possibility that there's a code that can be written that deals with those kinds of things?
There are property maintenance codes that say, they give you different, what, different levels of how you might require the, the property and to take care of it, primarily to keep everyone safe. And we can talk about that as we go forward. And this one, that, that's, now we're all assuming failures. So I wanted to just be really careful that we're, we're not here to fail. I mean, and we'll, we can have a code that says when a sign, and we have these signs in town that, you know, the business went out or they never put the sign back up after it got blown out. We have the ability to tell them to fix it or take it down over a period of time. We have that, we have that ability to do it. We need to write that into our code so that we can go in and stand before a judge and show them we have that right to make them fix it. But that's kind of outside of what we're asking tonight. And that's one of the challenges with bringing this to you now is because we are talking about this big stuff and we're going down to this, this finite topic.
Like I said, I was going to bring it up and we'll get to the
No, you're fine. I'm glad you brought it up. So I guess if, if we started going through the list of uses that would be compatible with an adjacent residential area, and I liked what we were doing. We're going, no. Yes, no, maybe, maybe with conditions. If we can continue doing that for that list, I think we're going to come down to a shorter list that we think is compatible. And then when we go and meet with the neighborhood, with some neighbor, neighbors and talk about this type of thing, it might get even a little tighter. So let's start with that. I think what I'm hearing, I haven't heard anybody up there say yet, small uses are, would be, are smaller spaces would be nice. I didn't see anyone saying no to potentially other residential uses being mixed in there. So well, I'd like to hear that. Let's, let's continue this, this discussion because this is giving me a lot to think about.
Donna Hatch, I've been a real estate agent for 23 years and I'm telling you when you start building businesses in $600,000 neighborhoods, it does affect their value. If your backyard is overlooking a drive-through, if you're back, even if it's a bank, closed on the weekends, whatever. It still affects your value. A motel hotel, I don't think that's a small use at all. I think that actually could invite some issues like vagrancy and things like that. Will people stretch that motel hotel use into, I should be able to have a bed and breakfast? I should be able to have an Airbnb, which a lot of our neighbors hoods are struggling with right now. A drive-through, no way. Lights turning and circling. If I'm in my backyard having a barbecue, I don't want to see somebody going through a drive-through. These are things that I think need to, even with conditions, because I've sat here on the board and I've had to approve things because of conditions that I think probably should, I would have rather not had brought in front of me for that spot. So this is just my opinion. And I feel like my hands are tied. You know, that I don't really have a voice for my, my community. The outdoor entertainment, yes, you can always have, you know, no sounds after a certain time, but look what's happened with Colorado Springs with the concerts.
Yeah, we don't have a mirror like that up here though.
So I love the concept, listening to the neighbors, listening to people as I was talking with them about the, the upcoming planning commission ideas. They want a small town community feel. I just want to make sure that we box it in to where we're not affecting home values, home resales. Because honestly, it will take much longer to sell a house that's behind a convenience store.
May, may, I'm so sorry to do this to you guys. I want to step in with something that might make the discussion quicker and faster. And that is I don't think this could happen next door to you because Dan, we can't spot zone. You can't, in other words, this is a zoning district. So you can't go next door to you and go, we're going to change this lot to this zone. It's spot zoning and we can't do this. So the way I'm understanding this, this would primarily be for undeveloped swaths of land. No surprises. You're not going to have something coming in next door, which would just lead me to ask, why aren't you considering an overlay zone?
Because we haven't talked about it. So I mean, that
Then you might look at some downtown neighborhoods and put an overlay zone on them. This is just not going to apply to most of Monument.
Except the areas that bought with a vacant land behind them thinking, and we always advise, our agents always have to say, we don't know what's going to be
Unless it's big acreage, right, that hasn't been developed.
But it's still something, I think it's
The points are well taken, but yeah, if you have a piece of vacant property behind you and you look at the comprehensive plan or you look at the zoning district. Unless you want to buy that property, which is what we did. Unless you want to buy that property, you don't have control over it and you have to assume that the community and their plan commission and their council are going to be responsible and hear, hear the community and make sure that the problem, what's built there is compatible with your property. But to assume that it's not going to have, it's not going to be something you don't like is, is probably naive. You have to be careful. So, but I thank you, Commissioner Green, again for just pointing out that, that, that's something we have to where I can't come in, and that's actually one of my problems with this property that we're talking about. I can't come in and dictate what's going to be there. And so I'm trying to work with you and the code and the community to make sure that it's something that's compatible and works with them because we know what didn't work. This is an uphill battle. This is going to be a challenge, but in this, it's part of the PUD. So it's a we, we're, again, I don't want, maybe this is not the right solution. Maybe this isn't the right way to look at it. Maybe we're, we're trying something that doesn't work, but I wanted to have that, start that conversation with you. Because it's, we, in that case, need to sell this property. We were holding on to something that we don't, we can't afford to hold on to. Which is probably not a good thing to say in a public meeting when a developer's watching around the corner. But it, the truth is, so we want to make sure that when we do put it out, we're not having, and we're, we're not hurting the community or hurting that neighborhood or putting them right back in the position they were in in the first place.
And other neighborhoods, other cities do use this non-commercial and it, when I researched it, it had good feedback. It's just, I try to think of how would I feel? And I, you know, my house, wherever my house was, whether I have a vacant lot or not behind me. The fact is, is we have some of these, they are high traffic. And even though I could walk to it, I still think that some of these just don't give me that small town feel, like the mom and pop shops. Wonderful. So I just want you to make sure that whatever category you have, which I listed hotel motel, drive-through, convenience store, bank, and I missed the outdoor entertainment. Those are the ones I really want to make sure had defined parameters to protect the citizens that live around it.
Very good. That's, that's, that's a good comments.
Drive-through, it's not part of the zoning. Yeah, conditional. But the bank, as you mentioned, it's not drive-through bank. It's the community scale bank, you know? And I think it's good to remember that the scale of the business, it's small and it should blend to the surrounding. So you don't feel big structure, you know? We should see like that. Maybe you are right. This is not kind of final word or final use that we want to have. We are here to make a correction and make the best. Maybe we should add some use to that list as well, not just use what we have. So here, just open conversation as, yes.
I wanted to
Thank you.
I'll, I'll have a comment before I go to the other two commissioners, but sitting on the, the steering committee and talking about the comprehensive plan, one of the things that comes up most often when I talk to residents in Monument is that they, one of the things that they want to maintain is a small town feel. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to kind of create that so that we create. And I don't want to go back 50 years, 60 years when I was a kid living in a small town where I walked two blocks to the neighborhood store and, you know, bought a pop and some candy, but I kind of see that as where we kind of create more of that neighbor, neighborhood rather than just big, you know, rooftops everywhere. And then we have a central location to go for shopping. So I think this just creates an opportunity for us, but I think we do need to really put our foot down and say, this is what we want to be a part of that. And we can do that over time, but Commissioner Peterson, I know you had a couple of things you wanted to say.
Yeah, pretty similar sentiments. Understand what we're trying to do, especially with some of the feedback from comprehensive plan discussions of same thing. Small town feel and everything. I had a similar thought of square footage restrictions. I don't know how hard that is or easy that is to do, but had the same thought. Do we have? Do we have, it sounds like not, but any proposed maps of locations that we feel like this would apply to? Like, do we have a kind of a survey diagram of here's a handful of parcels that this would apply to or not apply to? Yeah.
I'm sorry, no, we don't.
Yeah, I assume so, but just checking because that kind of my first question will, if we make this, how many do you think it's actually going to apply to? That's, you know, open for development.
So we, we spoke with Andy Cross at Lakota Group who's helping us with our comp plan. We told him a little bit about this and we admitted that this is the cart before the horse. And so that might be something as we're, as we're moving forward, the comprehensive plan, we might indicate with stars on the map where this might be applicable. And we can work through that in the, the future land use plan. But we haven't done that yet. That's, this, even though as uncomfortable as we as planning staff are, this is really trying to figure out a good way to manage this, this, this single, this, this area, this one piece of property to get it back on the market and, and make it, have, have something positive come out of it. This might not be the best way to do it and, and your reaction is actually, I anticipated a lot of this. It wasn't, it's not that I, I thought you guys were going to just sign off on this and have us move forward. You're asking the right questions and I appreciate that. I, the, I think to just to give you a little more background with councils thinking is they like the front street development that's going up right now. It's small, it's got, it's a live work, potentially a live work unit. It's got small retail, so smaller businesses can fit in. And, and as opposed to putting it on the edge or in the middle of a downtown, they're saying, well, why can't we just transplant that? The market can very well might just tell them, you can't, and it doesn't work. But we wanted to have this conversation here now before we start putting, we're putting restrictions on a single piece of property before we sell it. So keep talking. We're writing it down a lot of notes right now. We might come back with something completely different as a result of it. So I really appreciate your, your, your feedback right now.
Possibly naive question, can not do a PUD amendment to change the use for that?
Funny, you should say that because we're going to have to do a PUD amendment because there are, this, these properties are in, in, in a plan unit development. So that means we're going to be notifying the entire community that's in this PUD that we're going to take this property out of the PUD and we're going to zone it something. So.
And keep it in the PUD and re.
We can amend the PUD. That's another way to handle it. So, and the attorney and I have discussed that.
That's curious.
No, the attorney and I spoke about that. That's another way to manage or to create restrictions on this property. It still requires, so when we go to sell this property, and I'm really sorry this became this property, but the, when we go to sell the property, we're, we're going to, we're, now we're giving them with something that has many steps before they get approval. So now the value drops. So we're, we're truly trying to figure out the best way to, to do this. And so you're, those are great questions, but there's going to be a lot of steps. I would love to be able to do is say, here you go, here's turnkey, it's been rezoned. These are the uses, here are the standards that are permitted, here are the setbacks. We're, we're going to put in the, you're going to have a trail going through it, whatever, we can have it all upfront. So whoever buys it can tell us what it's worth and they can, and develop it. That seems a little too focused on one piece of property. So we were trying to come up with, how do we utilize this as to create a standard that could be used and emulated in other places? And that comes with challenges and that's what we're finding out just in this small conversation. I, I, I kind of tremble to think what it would be like when I go sit down with, in a, in a church and had talked to the neighbors about this. I have to be open, I have to listen. I want, I want to make sure I understand their concerns, similar to any other comprehensive planning hearing that we're going to have. But I'm in this position because the town made the decision that it did. So I want to make sure that I can keep, put the council in the best position to, to get this property back on, back into the development field and, and become a productive piece of, a productive asset to the community.
Sounds like you're, you guys are under the gun a little bit.
Kind of between a rock and a rock. So that's, yeah.
So I was always, I was curious about. The overall map of where that works. I think the idea is great from the same concept of keeping small towns small. And then that similar question of what kind of studies does Lakota possibly have access to that? Kind of a new data of small business success. With some of those current downtown houses, you know, what is our current downtown success? What is new small business success and kind of driving, you know, some factors there possibly as you, as you state market driven analysis? But that's, you know, not a quick answer that, that's something that have to be in process, but.
A very reasonable answer tonight from you might be, this doesn't work right now. We need to go back to the comprehensive plan. Let's finish that process. Let's have the studies and the information behind it. It's unfortunate and it's, it's because we'd like, the council would like to, to sell this property and use that money for other things. But we're in the right position. We're just a few steps early. So that, that could be, very easily be your answer tonight. I, or you can come up with some other things for us to think about and come back to you later, or you might have something more specific, so.
Yeah, I think going through uses is definitely a, a good process may not be for tonight. Or maybe it has to be, depending on timeline.
Nothing has to be. You guys are, I, I hate, I just heard a counselor, a commissioner tell me that she felt like her hands were tied and she was forced. That makes me cry inside. I don't, you are not in that position. We're not holding you like that. We have codes, you follow them. We have standards, we have discussions and sometimes. Right on. So I don't want you to feel tonight that you're being forced to do anything. I just, we really are interested in the conversation. And again, you're giving us a lot to think about, so I appreciate it.
Maybe it's a doodle poll. We can all vote.
Ooh, a doodle.
Because we're all going to have different opinions. We're going to speak at Sater all night trying to argue what, what uses.
That's you. You can right now end the meeting and tell.
You can end the meeting and tell us, give us a direction forward, but let's, yeah, it's up to you where we go from now. I mean, if you want to continue talking about what we can, if you want to shut down, it's up to you. But I, we have a bunch of stuff in front of you right now. If you want to tell us what doesn't work or what you, or you have concerns about, we could do that. Or if you just don't like any of this, tell us and we'll move on, so.
Before you, sorry, I, before you starting to kind of close that, I want to mention about the pod you mentioned. And pod, it's kind of the overlay that the owner needs to give some parts of the land or track to the service of the community. So that cannot be pod, we need to take off that lot from the pod to make as a one parcel by their own entity. So then can rezonate. So the pod cannot be possible. And the one that you mentioned about the research and study, there is already done kind of existing condition and report July 2023. If you go over that, it's kind of give some statistic and analysis about the town that we come with those, that this zoning is missing. So that's the good kind of data that we already have for the town. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Wanted to give Commissioner Parr an opportunity to share his thoughts.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One, I think is a great idea. Keeping Monument small, small business and stuff, but wouldn't want to see a higher is going up in town. But my question is, how do you determine what pieces of property get rezoned like this? I mean, do you, do you have a, a list of standards or do you, I mean, you know, like there's existing lot and you got houses next to it and all of a sudden you're changing the zoning for it and how does, how does this come about? How do you determine which ones get changed and which ones they were there?
Would you like this one or, I mean, I can. That's correct. So yeah, we can't do that anyway, willy nilly. It's, there's a, there's always a process. There, it's usually, it's based on a future land use plan. It doesn't identify a specific piece, but it might say this area would be, would be best served by a neighborhood, a neighborhood commercial of space. And then you have to work your way through it, but there's no, there's nobody just dropping or picking out properties and saying this property has to be that. We're going to have the same kind of conversation about community centers. Where would be a really great area to target to locate a community center or an indoor soccer facility or sports facility? We're going to have those, that's part of the comp plan and that's part of the discomfort I have with this process right now. So well. But you can control it through specific standards in, in, in your ordinance, saying that the use can, the building has to fit this envelope. The retail spaces have to be this size. Signs can only be in the windows. You can do all sorts of things with your code design standards. But knowing that you're also restricting value of that property to whoever's buying it because there's more, more, more things for them, more restrictions. So, and that's the balance. I'm just going to put this out there now. I, I think you've given us a lot to think about. I'd like to, if you're comfortable, you can have, you can continue the conversation if you'd like, but I think we've got enough here to, to, to go back to the drawing board and try to come back with something a little stronger or a different process.
Such a zoning be a valuable asset to us. If somebody came in as they did before, for us to annex that property north of the city, south of Kelly Line Road, if we could include that zoning as part, if we annexed, I mean, detail on that, but wouldn't that be something that could be done?
So Commissioner, you're, you're bringing, I understand what you're saying and, but you're, you're bringing it to light and interesting thing. So an annexation is a contract. It's different than zoning. So if the community, if somebody was coming into, into your community or requesting annexation, the community can negotiate that contract and establish restrictions and, and guidelines and design thoughts and, and tax incentives and go on and on and on, right? Those are, that's a contract between two parties. That could be another way we handle this here. It could be that we establish a contract with the sale of this property. And this is different now. It's no longer an annexation. It's a sale of the property. And if you're going to build on our property that we're selling you, we've established some standards for it and you're, that the building has to be placed so many feet away, only these uses are going to be allowed in, on that property. That's something we talked about for the site that I described before. And that's something we might have to go back to, but I still need your, I still need to know what you guys think of commercial development adjacent to residential and what are those standards we would tie to that sale of that property? And I'm going to ask the neighbors the same thing. What are you going to accept? They might tell me nothing and that's, that's our biggest fear. But what are, what can we reasonably do to this, to a property that's adjacent to residential? So I was trying to, we were trying to bring it as a more wide approach where, where else could we put it? But we could do something, what you were describing is more of a contract provision. Yes, sir.
Let me answer regarding the annexation first, first question. Annexation is two ways. First, it has an owner and it's used to that. So they want to annex to the city. We cannot change unless the owner asks for change. But if the land or part of the area is unutilized or undeveloped, so yes, we can rezonate to what this is.
I think your messages are pretty clear, unless someone up here thinks something different. It looks like you're, the need is there, the idea of smaller, a smaller use like this is working. I think there's a lot of bugs to work out before we bring it back to you or bring it to council. So I, I thank you for that, so.
Yeah, I, I won't speak for everybody up here, but I think if we can agree, I don't think we're, we can agree that we can't agree on everything right now. So I think we just give direction to town staff to refine, to use Commissioner Hours' words and bring it back to us at a later date.
I'd like to make a motion, if we could, making a motion that we go ahead and convene this discussion at this point till more further information is available from the town staff, so we can go ahead and utilize the public information, so we can convene that going forward.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Chair Egley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatch. Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Parr.
Yes.
And Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Commissioner there.
All right, thank you. Next up on the agenda is any non-agenda public items? Don't know if anyone in the public, either online or in the room right now has any items. Seeing none, we'll move on. Reports, communications and announcements by the commissioners and then the staff. Anyone up here have any announcements or communication they'd like to offer? Staff?
Thank you. So I just said a few things. First of all, you all, you all know about your binders that are in front of you. That's going to, we're going to continue to add more information to that. We intend also to put that online, so you don't need to have the binder in your hand. And there's no reason why the general public can't see your cheat sheet, so to speak. Because it's just real, it's just real information and maybe it'll help us bring some more people interested in, in land use and planning commission activities. So if there's something in there that's missing that you would like to have during a meeting or in your, when you're looking at a report at home, you'd like to be able to turn to something quickly, let me know. The only one I'm going to probably not print in there is the entire municipal code. That's online. I'm not going to reprint maps because that's online. But I'll provide links and so on for that. So if there's something in there that you'd really like to see that would help you with your, your position here, please let, let us know and we'll in, include that.
Quick question for you with that, Dan. Is there something, as a brand new planning commissioner coming in to assist within the town of Monument, a cheat sheet of all those municipal codes, all of those comprehensive plans, all of the things and tools that you would use? Can you provide those linkages inside this binder for those people that are new that are considering to become? So that way they have that information readily available, not to print it, but that cheat sheet that identifies these are important aspects that are going to be valuable for you as you start considering coming to join us.
Their resources, yes, and we're developing that and it's increasing and improving as we move on. If you go into the comprehensive plan page and, and, and our planning department page, you're going to see a list of all of our plans, all the documents that we work with. I'd recommend you taking a look at it. You get to see what your predecessors did years ago compared to what you're doing today and how history seems to repeat itself. So take a look at that stuff. And it'll also help you in your deliberation and understanding of when a development comes before you. So yes, we're going to continue doing that. If you see something that's missing, Commissioner Green, at the last, this is another topic that I wanted to bring up. Commissioner Green informed us at the last meeting of an annexation agreement. That neither Ray, I can't say Miriam didn't know because she wasn't here yet, but Ray and I didn't know about it. I appreciated that you brought that up. We actually did. Um, I appreciate that, uh, you brought that up. Um, we actually did the research and, and, and right now we're working with our attorney to make sure that we, um, have a solid understanding of it before bringing it to council. So, um, and so there's going to be a connect, we're going to make sure that our library of documents are also available to you. Um, um, and, and that we're better aware of it and we're, we're getting better at that stuff. But, uh, the, um, we don't know what we don't know. So we're, we're, we're learning, uh, the history of the community. So yes, we're going to provide that. And if there's something missing, let me know. No one ever said that I said that.
One of the things I've seen, we've got a full commission, like you say, you should say. And we've got an extra seat up there. Is there a reason why an alternate cannot at least set up there? Get the package and be asked for comments?
Um, no, there's absolutely no reason. Um, and we provided her the packet, uh, as an alternate and we would continue to do that. Um, but she's chosen to sit down there and we're going to let, we're not going to force, but yes. I.
Get on the list and go away because they never have any voice. They, they just, you, you understand? And based on what you say, this young lady has a lot to voice. And I'm, I'm not trying to change the process. I just asked the question.
You're not, and thank you for bringing that up. And no, I would get gladly give my seat up to anybody. No, but there's two alternates and I would gladly give my seat up to sit down there. So, yes, there would be two. We just have one vacancy right now. So, um, no, we'd like them. The only thing they can't, the only thing an alternate can't do is vote. But there's no reason why they can't participate and communicate. They're, they're a member of our community. They're a resident, um, just like the public can speak. Um, you would encourage them to speak as well. So.
Uh, during the meeting. And say what they think.
Um, I get to say what I think sometimes and I probably should. So I don't know why we wouldn't have another plan guide, right? I don't know why a plant commission member, uh, alternate otherwise couldn't speak too. So thank you for asking that. Yeah.
Speak up during the meetings, please.
Uh, on a final note.
I'm sorry, I, I, before you jump out, I have two more, um, two more things. Um, you're going to note, notice in upcoming agendas that, uh, the, the, our case number system is changing. Don't be shocked. It's, uh, we're going to be tying it directly back to the Community Core software that we're using as opposed to just number, um, giving them a number in, uh, in order of receive, uh, receiving them. That's what that number is. It's just so that we can look up our, our information easier. Um, it's tied to the permit. It's tied to, um, tied to our development review process that's managed by Community Core. So that I just wanted to inform you that so you wouldn't be surprised or call me and ask me what's this number. Uh, and then the last one, um, was, uh, the comprehensive plan. So I wanted to, um, we've been, we continue, um, even though the, uh, our consultants kind of disappeared a little bit right now, we continue to, to do outreach. I want to thank, uh, Chair Egley for joining, uh, me on Saturday night at the, uh, uh, National Night Out event with the police department over at, uh, Train Park. And, uh, huh? That was your neighborhood. It was actually very enlightening. I learned a lot of things. I found different, I learned, I heard different perspectives um, from those, uh, those residents that we, who would hear in other areas. So, um, I really appreciate, but I appreciated your time. Um, I know you've also done a couple others. Uh, there are many opportunities if you want to, uh, join, um, one of us or, um, at the farmer's market. Um, I've been out there a couple of times with, uh, uh, Merrill Kind and others. Um, I know that Haley, uh, from Tri Lakes Cares has been going to these, uh, um, going to the concert series and hanging out the tent. It's kind of fun. I, I like talking to the, um, to the, to our community. Uh, I love hearing small town charm or small town feel and then turning back at them and saying, what does that mean? And it's so hard for someone to describe. We need people to describe that, um, or at least tell us what it's not. So that way we can work with that in our comprehensive plan. So, uh, I wanted to thank you for the time that you've been doing that. Uh, the, uh, Lakota Group, our consultant team will be coming back to us later this fall. Um, with, and we will start the, the visioning process. Um, so, um, I look forward to sharing, uh, having, having them come to you um, and, and have we continue that outreach and that discussion with the plant commission, steering committee and others. So, um, I didn't want you thinking that they disappeared, so they're not doing anything. I get the bills. They're still working. Um, and, uh, we're still chugging along with that, um, the comprehensive plan. Uh, we have started to receive some of the preliminary, uh, storm water management plan updates is from our consultant V three. They're not pretty. Um, they're, uh, they are, um, giving us a very, uh, uh, straightforward assessment of our storm water system, um, the county's impact on our storm water system. And then ultimately our impact on the Fountain Creek watershed. Um, it's going to be a lot for this community to grasp and understand and, and deal with over the next 20 years. Um, but I'm glad we're doing it. Um, it'll help us find funding, um, to, to make these improvements and to, and to make future development. Help us improve, uh, how we manage storm water. So I wanted to let you know and give you the update on that. And now I turn it back to you. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, one last item. I, I know we welcome new Commissioner Bomber tonight, but I was remiss in not welcoming and saying hello to Miriam joining the group and, uh, we look forward to working with you. And, uh, at this time, if there's nothing else, well, you're in the meeting.